Ready to go, uh, first order of business before we get the meeting, we have to reorganize. Um, so it is our first meeting after July 1st. So do we have nomination for Chair?
I'd like to nominate Mark Maloney for Chair.
Second.
Okay, Jim nominated David second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none of those in favor, vote aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, yeah, I forgot I'm supposed to do roll call. So I'm just gonna go by pictures. So David?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and the pictures keep on picturing. James?
Yes.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Deb Jokes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, we have to nominate for Secretary. I will nominate Jim Nguyen.
Second.
David seconds. So again, we'll go, I'm a yes. Uh, sorry, any other nominations?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mark Maloney votes yes. David?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Thank you. And Deb Jokes? I think that was a yes, right?
Yes, sorry.
No, no, you kind of cut off there. Alright. So, uh, we have a public hearing at 7:00 PM. What we're gonna do, we'll do it the same way we did it last month. I will read the, the public hearing notice. Jim, do you have all the correspondence?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I will read the public hearing notice. And if other people are on now, um, for example, Timothy Carl or Ryan Hobbs, please listen to the explanation I give, and then we won't have to waste your time going through it again. So, uh, fairly shortly here, uh, we'll be taking up the application of Jennifer Bache. Bachel? Jennifer, you can just nod if I'm saying it right.
Uh, it's Beech.
Beech, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, so, uh, I'll read it. This is on the application of Jennifer Beech for property located 316 Silver Street, Assessor's Map 122 Lot 2, which is located in the General Industries zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.11 C-26, 200-7.18, 200-8.3 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit consisting of a two-car garage, one-bedroom apartment at this loc- Okay, then. Uh, so in a moment, I think I will introduce the members of the board sitting. And, and Jennifer, I'll ask you to introduce yourself. Tell us what you want to do, where you want to do it, and why. From time to time, members of the board, uh, may have questions, although if possible, we'll hold them off to one, one timeframe. At some point, I will open up the, uh, hearing to public comment. Then when we close the public comment, then the board will discuss, uh, this and come to a conclusion tonight, I believe. Um, so you, you can stay, but we have, we have meetings, we have, uh, hearings every 15 minutes, so. From the time the board comes to a conclusion, we will, uh, we will think about, then we will send it, the clerk will type it up and file it with the city clerk. From the time it's filed with the city clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period in which anybody who feels aggrieved by the actions of the board can appeal to a higher court. If at the end of the 20-day appeal period, all appeals have been settled, or there are none, you can go ahead and do what we say you can do. Do you understand all that? Okay, thanks. Um, then the members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, David Singer, Deborah Jokes, uh, Peter Rosniak, and James Nguyen. And Jennifer, I'm gonna try to unmute. I think I can.
I can unmute myself.
There you go. Alright, that's fine. So you know how to do this. So go ahead, Jennifer, and just, uh, tell us all about it.
Uh, so I'm Jennifer Beech. I have owned 316 Silver Street for a little over 11 years now. Um, I bought it in condemned condition, and I've restored it to its original splendor. Um, my parents are getting to the age where they're looking to retire in a couple of years, and I'm hoping to um, add on a garage, which my property does not have. Um, and then above it, do, uh, an accessory dwelling for my parents with a one-bedroom apartment, so that they can retire there um, and be close for when they get old, I can take care of them. Um, so that's the, uh, the whole purpose of this.
Okay. How big? Oh, there you go. How big is, uh, the, uh, footprint, please?
Um, the gross living area will be 918 square feet.
Okay. Well, my-
Oh, sorry, 1,296 square feet. Um, in- including everything.
Okay. Um, is that my mic?
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, I'm sorry. Trying to do three different things here. Um, and which, uh, which side of the house would it be attached to?
It would be attached to the west side of the house.
So between the house and the railroad track?
Correct, yep, facing sandries.
Okay.
Oil plant.
And there is already, uh, a driveway there. There's a driveway entrance there.
Yes, I do have a driveway, and the, um, the driveway for the ADU will be attached to the current driveway, so there will be nothing changed to the street.
Right, okay, that's fine. Um, looking at it now, I don't really, uh, so let's, let's talk briefly about exterior lighting, Jennifer. Is, I don't, I don't see anything here, but can you tell me if on the plan, there's any exterior lighting?
Yes, it's, um, highlighted in, uh, little red dots. There will be three exterior lights. Um, one on the west side, one on the north side, and one on the south side.
Okay. Uh, maybe this microphone, hold on. Well, anyways, I believe you. Uh, there's a second means of egress from the actual dwelling space, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, so board members, I'm gonna ask you to hold off your questions. I'm gonna have Mr. Nguyen read the correspondence. It's fairly brief.
Okay. To the planning board from Eric Torog, AICP Director of Planning and Development. The direct Department of Planning and Development has no issues or concerns about the proposed attached accessory dwelling unit at 316 Silver Street. 316 Silver Street is located within the General Industrial GI Zone District. All types of accessory dwelling units are allowed within the GI District by special permit approved from the zoning board of appeals. Accessory dwelling units are allowed to be 600 square feet or one-third of the total gross floor area of the largest existing unit whichever is greater. As for the property card for 316 Silver Street, the total gross floor area is 7,681 square feet. One-third of this is 2,535 square feet. The applicant included a calculation of the area in the application material. However, they listed the total finished area of 4,125 square feet and not the total gross floor area of 7,681 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 1,296-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit which meets the area requirement of the zoning ordinance. All other requirements of section 200-7-18 accessory dwelling unit, the zoning ordinance, has been met. Okay. Uh, from the planning board, the board has no issues with this request. From the zoning board appeals to, from Mark Snow, Inspector of Buildings, the following are comments related to the special permit application for 316 Silver Street. The applicant is allowed the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit consisting of a two-car garage and a one-bedroom apartment at this location. There are building-related matters that will need to be addressed. These matters include, but are not limited to, a change of occupancy, use classification, fire separation between dwelling units, fire separation between dwelling units and attached garage, multi-carbon monoxide alarms. These code-related matters can be addressed during the permit process for the construction of the attached dwelling unit and garage. Two, the applicant should contact and work with the inspection department to determine an official street address for the second dwelling unit. Three, board members may wish to determine the actual square footage of habitable living space and unhabitable space. Four, the board members may want to condition that any future bedrooms, or if the garage is finished, off for a living space, must be approved by the board and permitted by the inspection department. Five, site plan shows a 10-by-12 deck. Board members may wish to include a 10-by-12 deck on the special permit, if a special permit is granted, respectively, Mark Snow, Inspector of Buildings. Uh, zoning board appeals from the engineer and superintendent. No comments or issues with this property. From the fire prevention officer to ZBA, no comments are issued with the proposed project. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, do the board members have any questions right now? Yep, David Singer?
Hi. Uh, hi, Jennifer. Um, I actually came by today, knocked on the door, uh, and looked around. So I'll show you this plan here. This, so I noticed that the property, the property goes way down here, so you're gonna enter enter through the westerly driveway, and then the garage is gonna be on the down level, that land slopes down, so the garage is gonna be built into that side hill.
Correct.
And then upstairs, at the same level as your front porch, that's the living area?
It's gonna be slightly below. There's gonna be some steps going from my main floor down to their main floor.
So you, you're, so you have windows and all sorts of nice things on this side of the house? They're gonna be lost to this, uh, construction? This house is gonna rub up against your house?
I'm only losing one window, um, and that's going to be turned into a door, which is going to go into the ADU.
I see. So it's only a width, this area is thin? From front to back?
Correct.
And that'll be a hallway, and then the living area will be over here?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not gonna destroy, because I know, like I said, you have a whole side of your house. You're just gonna, you're gonna kill one window to make it a door, and then you'll go through that door into the dwelling?
Yes, the, the, the only thing that's changing on the current house is there's being a window taken out and a door put in. Everything else to the original house is staying exactly the same.
Okay. Um, in determining this, we have a, you're, you're using the formula of one-third of the, of the space in the house. It is a big house.
Yes.
Um, so let's look at the, you, you, you comply if you use the 4,000 square feet, not the 7,000 square feet. Is why, is, I, I, again, your house, I, I walked around, I didn't walk around it, but I stayed on the driveway. It looks like it goes, so you're talking about the first and second, the ground level and the upstairs level, those two combined are 4,000 square feet?
Yeah, 4,125 square feet.
Okay, and those are, I, I mean, I guess the, the ordinance doesn't say it has to be livable. Is that all livable space, though? Are there bedrooms and rooms and things of that nature, or is it?
4,125 square feet is all livable, so that's the entire first floor and the entire second floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, have you read the, uh, ADU ordinance? You understand that there are certain limitations, limitations about the number of people that can live there, limitations about expanding the space once you build it, things of that nature. Are you familiar with all those, um, limitations?
Yes, once it's built, it cannot be altered in any way, shape, or form.
I'm sorry?
Yes, once it's built, it can't be altered in any way, shape, or form. It's as it is.
And you noted that the building inspector, uh, is suggesting that if you wanted to add another bedroom, then you'd have to come back for another special permit. Is that a problem?
That's not a problem, and it will not be happening.
And the last thing is, do you understand that you have to, there has to be an owner-occupied person on the property, so either in your building, or if you later decide that you want to move into that space as you get older, and you have to record something in the registry of deeds that indicates that. Understand that?
I do.
Those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, oh. Alright, you still, we're talking, David?
No, I'm done. Oh, oh, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Um, the deck is, is it on your plan? Where's the deck?
It's in the, um, the building permit that was submitted.
I have your plans. I don't see it on, I don't see it on any. You need a-
Yeah, it's on the it's off the door on the south side.
Oh, the back door, yep?
Yep, it's off of that.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a building permit, a zoning permit to build a deck?
Not if it's under a certain size and it's on the ground.
Yes, yes.
And we, we can just condition that anyways, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Alright, no problem. Okay, uh, Jim Nguyen, since we finally have a picture of your face?
Uh, do I understand correctly that your mother and father will be living there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That good? That it, Jim?
That, yep.
Alright, Peter, you have anything?
I finally joined the meeting. Yeah, no, I have no further questions. They were answered.
Where are you on here? Oh, there you are. Good. Uh, Debbie Jokes, do you have anything? You're, you're muted. Here. There you go.
Let's try that again. I was trying to be really good while I was wrestling my papers.
You were.
So, Jennifer, um, hi, I'm Debbie. When you, um, at some point, your parents were obviously not going to be living there. Do you have any plans that maybe someday down the road you'd look to rent that out, or are you looking to just, if anyone moves there, moves in there, it would be family members? Just kind of curious as to what would happen, you know, 20, 25 years down the road?
Uh, that's a good question, um, and I, I don't ever intend on having that rented out, um, it, that's, it, it's not something I would ever plan to do. Uh, I, I don't like that idea. Um, so, I, I mean, down the road, when my parents are no longer with me, um, it, it would be, uh, my garage, obviously, um, storage, and if my, one of my nieces needs to move in, then she has a place to live, or my brother down the road, I don't know. Um, it would have, only ever be a family or a friend or something like that. Um, it would never be rented out for purposes.
Alright, that's all the questions I have for now, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Um, uh, just, oh, so Debbie, you're dig, right, uh, okay. So now, Jennifer, hold on. Um, so we'll come to public input portion of this hearing. So are there any members of the public who want to weigh in on the application of Jennifer Beech for property located 316 Silver Street for an accessory dwelling unit and garage? Now is the time, if you're gonna speak, you need to identify yourself and give us your address, please. So, anybody from the public want to weigh in on this? I'm not seeing anybody. So we're gonna, I'll give it another few seconds, but basically, we need to keep moving on here. Okay, so, uh, any other questions from any of the board members for Jennifer, for now? We won't, when we get to it tonight, we're just gonna roll on, so now's the time to ask any questions. Somebody? Anybody? No, board members are okay. And Jennifer, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, as I said, Jennifer, we will be coming back to this. Um, but we, we're already late for our next hearing, so, uh, stick around. You can mute yourself, and it'll be easier. And then we'll come back, we'll talk amongst ourselves. Well, uh, if the Lord's so inclined to grant the permit, then there will probably be some conditions, but nothing that you haven't already seen or talked to somebody about, I should think. Okay? So, thank you. Um, moving on, 7:15 PM. We will take up the application of Timothy Carl for property located at 25 Prospect Ave. Assessor's Map 27 Lot 29, which is located in the urban residential zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections 200-5.3 E2 and 200-8.3 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a 20% reduction of the southerly side yard setback from 10 to 8 feet at this location. Uh, is Mr. Carl with us, I hope?
Yes, I am.
Um, are you audio, are you 19? Okay, I see, that's fine. Um, so were you here? Did you hear my explanation of how this works before?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then I will just, uh, again, inform the public, the board sitting are Mark Maloney, James Nguyen, David Singer, Deborah Jokes, and Peter Rosniak. And Mr. Carl, you are, go ahead and introduce yourself, and then tell us what you want to do.
My name's Timothy Carl. I live 25 Prospect Avenue here in Greenfield since 97. So I've been here for a while. Um, I've had plans to do different things in the yard for quite a while, in the house, and so the plan I want to do is put a garage in the backyard and to put it where is, um, now is not gonna work in the yard, so I want to move it to the other side of the yard and change everything. And to turn into my yard into the garage from the driveway will be tight, so I want to push it back a depth, even that little bit would help a lot. So that's my plan.
Okay, um, what's, what's, uh, I see, okay, I got it. What's behind you? I guess is the question.
What's be, what's behind me?
Yeah, so the area that, the area that you're asking us to allow the 20% reduction for is the backyard, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so what's on the other side of your property line back there?
Uh, Debbie Allen.
Okay.
And there's a garage right there.
Okay, alright, that's fine, that helps. Alright, uh, is there anything else you want to add about that? I mean, all you really need from us is a 20% reduction of the backyard setback.
Yep.
That's what we're talking.
Yep.
Everything else is building inspector related, so, um, let me just check. I don't even know. I do not have in my package anything. So Jim Nguyen?
I have quite a package.
Okay, so you want to read the correspondence, please?
Yep. Uh, zoning board appeals from the planning board. The board has no issues with this request. To the zoning board appeals from the fire prevention officer. No comments or issues with the proposed project. The zoning board appeals from the inspector of buildings. No comments or issues with proposed project. From the engineer and superintendent to the zoning board of appeals. No comments or issues with proposed project. That's it.
Okay, oh, that's, that's unusual. Um, okay, board members, and again, I'm gonna go basically down the list. Um, questions for Mr. Carl, uh, Jim Nguyen?
Uh, Mr. Carl, you're gonna be two feet closer to the chain link fence, the way I look at this drawing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In the garage that's there.
And that chain link fence is on your neighbor's property?
Correct. Thank you.
And, um, the, the current garage is going away, correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright, um, David Singer? Oh, I gotta, hold on here. There you go, you should be able-
I came by and looked at the house. I looked at your project. I understand what you're doing. I think I would like to have you state for the record, though, um, in order to get the 20% reduction, you have to show the following. There are three things, and this is the one that I'd like you to discuss. There are some diff, so in, the reason that you want us to give you two more feet is because which cannot become without a reduction in the dimensional requirements, uh, which is suitable for the lot, uh, than what, than one would, which would be allowed, uh, with the permitted requirements. So in other words, uh, if we were to shrink it two feet, how would you be harmed?
Um, it'd be, uh, pretty difficult to turn the radius to get my truck up the driveway and then turn into the garage. We, I tried it a couple times already, so.
Okay. And I, there's, well, we'll find out, but, uh, you know, I, um, okay, I just wanted you to put on the record what, that it was not just for your convenience.
No, no, and well, I guess it's just that. I mean, to turn, go up my driveway and then turn into where the garage is going, the doors are gonna be, gonna be difficult, even with just that two feet, so it would help a lot.
So even, so, so no matter what, if that garage was moved, if, if you, well, what if you shrunk the back, what if you left the front where it is on your proposal and shrunk the back by two feet, then, then what would happen?
Uh, my truck would not fit.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, thank you.
You all set, David?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Debbie Jokes?
Um, I don't have any questions that weren't already answered.
Okay, great. Peter Rosniak? Oh, Peter, uh, you're muted. Hey, can I do it here?
Sorry about that. When I went to the site today and I looked at the building, I, I saw 23, and may, maybe I was just looking at the wrong building, but I, I could not find a building that had 25 on it.
Well, you were on Prospect Street.
Oh, okay. Alright, sorry about that. Okay, no questions.
I, I have that a lot. A lot of people do that. Where are you? I can't find you. I'm on Prospect Ave, so.
So you're, you're on you're at the Prospect Ave?
Yeah, the very, second to last house on the left, yep.
On the left, okay. Yeah, alright, okay, alright, um, okay, board members are done with questions. Um, we've read the correspondence, so if there's any public input, now's the time. And if you're going to make a comment, please identify yourself and tell us where you live. So any members of the public want to comment on the application of, uh, Timothy Carl for property located somewhere on Prospects, Pros, I almost did it, Prospect Ave, 25-
No, I'm not Prospect.
I hear somebody talking. Anybody? Eileen Roach, do you wanna? What in here?
I'm, I'm I'm here for the six, for the Leiden Road.
Okay, that's fine, no, that's fine. Uh, I want to mute yourself until we get to-
I'm trying to. This is a totally new system.
Yeah, I know, believe me. Um, alright, so here, you know what? I bet I can do it for you. I just did. Okay. Um, anybody, any other public comments? Actually, there is none, but anybody else for public comment? On the application, she's on Timothy Carl. No? Okay, we're actually still running behind, but, alright, so Mr. Carl, you heard what I said before. We will take this up tonight, um, And stick around if you wish. Mute yourself if you can. And we'll deal with it tonight. I, I'm confident of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Seven thirty P M, huh? Okay, so next up is the application of Brian Pro, yeah, Hobbs, property located at six ten Leiden Road. Testers map R thirty lot twelve, which is located in the rural residential zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash six point one C and two hundred dash eight point three zoning ordinance in order to allow the conversion of a single family home on a legal nonconforming lot to a two family home at this location. Mr. Hobbs, did you hear my explanation of how this works earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we don't have to go through that again. And the members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, Jim Nguyen, Peter Rosniak, David Singer, and Debbie Jelks. And Mr. Hobbs, you want to introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do, please?
Sure, my name is Brian Hobbs. I bought six ten Leiden Road back in the spring. It's a it's a pretty dilapidated, single family home right now with a newer two car garage. When I say newer, it's probably I guess it's twenty to twenty five years old. So it's a conventional construction and the only good part of the building, really. So I hired my designer to get some plans to convert the existing building into a two family house. And he just, we ran into too many roadblocks and trying to make it happen. The existing building that's there because of the inadequate structure, also the inadequate foundation, there's problems with the foundation. Little, little beyond just repairs. So so it just makes, makes much more sense at this point to just tear it down and build new. So what we'd like to do is take the house down, leave the existing two car garage and convert that into living space. And then essentially put an addition on the garage on the same footprint of the house that's there. The footprint of the new building will not change. So we use the, we'll use the square footage of the new addition along with the square footage of the two car garage as living space and essentially have two single level, two bedroom one bath apartments. And there's, as you can see in the plan, there's two driveways already. There are two curb cuts, two driveways, plenty of parking for well, it only requires two parking spots for apartment, but there's plenty of room there for three or four on each side. There's a, when I bought it, it had a failed Title V septic test and it came with a unapproved design. It's got a, it's got a got a design that's been approved by the Greenfield Board of Health for five bedrooms. So we'll be using that design. Can't really think of anything else to add to that. That's basically what I'm looking to do.
I'm mute myself. Okay, is that all for now? Mr. Hobbs?
Yeah.
Right, there you are. That's fine. So just to clarify things, you're using the same footprint as what exists now. In your rebuild, in your rebuild, you're basically gonna have two living units. And one garage. Yes, no. Yes, with the garage?
No, there won't be a garage in the end. The garage is converted to living space.
That's fine. But you've got plenty of parking space. And did you say you have rectified the Title V failure, or the plan is to rectify the Title V failure?
Well, it'll be part of the, the whole construction process. That, that'll go in after the building's done. But I have an approved, I have a fully approved plan with the Board of Health already.
Okay, that's fine. That's good to know. Okay. So Jim Nguyen? If you could read the correspondence, please?
Okay, we've got paper correspondence and we've got electronics. So let me read the paper first. Okay, this is from Captain Daniel K. Smith, Fire Prevention Officer, Greenfield Fire Department. The plan provided do not contain smoke CO detector placements. A permit will be needed to be taken from a building electrical department accompanied by a drawing with smoke and CO placements for our review. An inspection and system will be done after completion. The fire department has no other questions or concerns. This is from the engineer and superintendent, D P W. No comments or issues with proposed plan. Hang on one second. Eric just sent out a couple more. I gotta open it up on my iPhone. Inspector of buildings. Oh, scratch that one. Additional review of comments, okay, for six two. Okay, now this is, we're all set. disregard what Eric sent out. Okay, that's it.
All right, that's it for correspondence. So I'm gonna the board members with questions. Jim, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, Brian, is this group owner occupied or strictly rental?
Strictly rental.
Okay, thank you.
That it, Jim? Just nod. Okay, David Singer, please.
Hi, Brian. So you know that you, so you, so you understand under zoning that you can't tear the whole house down and build a two family, correct? That's why you're leaving the garage?
I mean, I, I can't say as I'm really up to speed on zoning laws.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't say as I'm really up to speed on zoning laws regarding what you're saying, but I, I don't know if leaving the garage. I left the garage because it's a good building. That's the basic reason for it. But it doesn't make any sense to not use it.
Right.
I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it, it kind of can. David, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. We can make that a condition of affirmative if the board's inclined to grant. Just saying. So David, you have other questions, I assume?
Nope.
No? Okay. Peter Rosniak?
I'm all set. No further questions.
Okay, Debbie Jelks?
I am all set, thank you.
Okay. Then yeah, I think, I think the point Singer was making is it's a, it's legal. It's a legal, it's a single family home on a legal nonconforming lot. So it's a change. That's, I don't know where that sound is coming from. Maybe I'm the only one who can hear.
Somebody's roughling papers.
Well, well, it's me out. All right, anyways, so we'll come back to that later. But in the meantime, why don't we? We've read all the correspondence. There isn't much. So now, and Ms. Roach, I will unmute you.
Unmute me, thank you.
So now is a public comment on the application of Brian Hobbs for six ten Leiden Roads.
Right. So we are right next door. Six fourteen Leiden Road. Our ne, our neighbor next door to on the other side, Michael Sims. And the Stribleys across, across the street, six seventeen. We kind of really would prefer a single, a single. We, we have so many duplexes in this immediate area. Not always the most stellar people coming in. And, and we're kind of, we're, we're not trying to burst anybody, you know, be nasty about it, but we, we'd much prefer a single next door to us.
Okay. More? Are you done, Mrs. Roach?
Well, I, um, yeah, I don't know what happened. I, I am done. I'm, and I was also asked to speak to people that are in the neighborhood. They're not here.
No, that's fine. I mean, this is not an easy way to hold a public hearing.
I'm a teacher. This is all I've been doing since I'm so used to it.
There you go.
So I, I'm, I'm pretty much done. And also, we have a fence to call it that. The, the former owner kind of took that out. And we, we, we know we have to put another one up. So I, maybe Mr. Hobbs can help us.
All right. Okay.
That's no problem.
All right, good.
So yeah, I'm done. I'm done.
No, no, that's why I want to make sure you have your chance here.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, then what I'm gonna do is mute you at this point, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all. Actually, I can leave now if that's
Yeah, that's, we'll get to it tonight, but not for a while. So you can check back in.
Forgive us against it. Three families against it. Okay, so yeah, I'm gonna leave.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else for public input on the application of Brian Hobbs for six ten Leiden Road? I'm not hearing anything else? No? Now's the time. If you're on the phone, just, you know, talk and I'll unmute you and all that good stuff. No? Okay. Then we're gonna quote public comment at seven fifty and we'll go back to the board members. Again, I'm gonna go down the line such as it was, is. So Jim Nguyen? Anything else from Mr. Hobbs?
You?
All right, was that a no? Just nod your head. Yeah, that's a no. Okay, great. David Singer?
No, I have no other questions.
Okay. Peter Rosniak?
Mr. Hobbs, did I hear you indicate based on public input that you'd be willing to put a fence up?
I did not indicate that.
I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard you say that. All right, that's, I'm referring.
I'm pretty sure I know which fence she's talking about. And I, I be honest with you, I haven't owned it that long, so I don't even know who's fence it is. Obviously, it, it, it needs a little repair. It's not in horrible shape, but it would be who, me to to help that if it's their fence. It would be who, me to help them fix it up. You know, for, for my own purposes, to separate material property. But prior to tonight, I honestly didn't know whose fence it was, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's, you know, the whole fence thing is always an issue.
No further questions, please.
All right, that's fine. Thank you. Deborah Jelks? Are you muted?
You are muted.
I am muted.
All right, there you go.
I am all set. No other questions.
Really? Great, you're buying me some time. Just, I'm, I'm using another computer, so I'm looking for something. All right, so okay. All right, so okay, oh, Mr. Hobbs, how healthy are those pine trees? On your south line?
I'll be honest with you, I'm a carpenter. I'm not a, I'm not a tree guy. I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Again, I don't even, they're on the, they're on the property line, so if, if they're my trees that, you know, that's, I'm, I'm not sure who's the tree, the trees there. So, I mean, I mean, as long as I've owned it, I haven't had to like pick up any branches on the ground underneath them, you know, that indicates.
That's a good, that's a good start.
Yeah. So I don't know what that, what that means, but I don't I, I mean, they don't stick out like a sore thumb. They're not I don't, you know, you know, like usually you see a, a tree in poor shape that you know, the average person can notice it, but I, it didn't draw any attention on my part.
Okay, I'm looking at the fence right now. Yeah, all right. Okay.
It was a pretty, pretty dilapidated property. The previous owner, I think was a, was a scrap, scrap guy type of thing. And I mean, I get the whole two family thing coming to the neighborhood, people's thoughts, but it's, it's gonna be all new construction when I'm done. It's gonna be a nice building. It's gonna be a, a much better property in that neighborhood. And it's and I think it's gonna draw, you know, good quality tenants.
Yeah, it is kind of beat up, isn't it? All right, board members, any other questions for Mr. Hobbs?
No.
I'm seeing shakes of heads now. Okay. Mr. Hobbs, anything else you want to add? Okay, just so you know, if the board's inclined to grant the special permit, it may come with conditions. One of those conditions may be to put up a fence, but I don't know that that would be the case. I'm just letting you know that ahead of time. So again, we have another hearing after this one. I expect we will deal with this tonight. So you're welcome to stay. I would just ask that you mute yourself if you can. And I can do it. So as soon as I find you. Only if I find the right thing and do the right thing. Always. Oh, there you are. Okay. So you're all set, Mr. Hobbs, for now?
Yeah.
Okay, so for everybody else, we're gonna move along. Here we go. So seven forty five. Well, we're only ten minutes behind. So now we're gonna take up the application of Solitus Inc., here of Jennifer Miller, for property located at sixty Newton Street, testers map thirty five lot one. Is located in the general commercial for a special permit pursuant to section is two hundred dash one C two hundred dash eight point three zoning ordinance order to allow in addition to the existing building within the required front yard setback. So who is here for this?
Solitus, Jennifer Miller. Hi.
Oh, you're using your kid's computer.
Actually, no, it's mine, but for some reason, her name popped up, so.
Okay, that's all good.
Yep.
Probably last one to log in. Okay, so were you here when I explained how this process works before?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so I don't have to go through that. Here you are.
No.
So I'm going to introduce the So, I'm going to introduce the members of the board and then I'll throw it to you and you can tell us all.
Sounds good.
Of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, uh, James Winn, David Singer, Peter Rosniak, and Deborah Jelks. And you wanna introduce yourself, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Miller. I'm the VP of Operations for Solidus. We're a design-build general contractor. And Franklin First Federal Credit Union is a client of ours and they've asked us to add an addition to their existing administrative office at sixty Newton Street.
Okay, so tell us all the.
Well, they're basically looking to, they're a growing credit union. They're looking to expand their administrative offices. Um, the best option for them was to utilize the property across the street from the main branch, um, where there was room to do the addition. Uh, the only key, uh, issue that apparently we've run into is the existing building is not compliant to the setback requirements. And therefore, the addition would not be compliant as well. Um, every other aspect of it, we're just adding, you know, a small addition. I believe the total square footage is just slightly over fifteen hundred square feet. Um, everything else complies. It's strictly the front setback. And if you're familiar with the street, the, the front setback is a very, very, very steep hill. Um, so there's really nowhere to go forward. Um, and quite frankly, the addition that we're adding is setback just a little bit. Um, that was by design architecturally, but also helps with the setback limitations on the street.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Joe Wren. Can you hear me okay now?
You're, you're calling user four?
Uh, maybe, yes. I'm calling in via cell phone because I'm in New Hampshire.
That's fine. Good place to be.
So if you can hear me okay, I'm the, uh, the site civil, uh, the site civil engineer working for, uh, with Solidus on this project. And I could just give you a little bit more detail.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so the addition is approximately twenty-three and a half by twenty-five point one. So it's somewhere between five and six hundred square feet, add on to the, uh, existing small building. So it's a fairly small addition. If you look closely at the plan, you'll see that there's already, you know, maybe a seventy to eighty square foot front entryway, which will be removed to make way for this addition. So there is already some building in that area. And the, if you look at the aerial photos that we submitted with the application, you'll see that, uh, right now, the area where the addition's going is currently asphalt. Um, so we're not increasing any impervious coverage. Uh, we're just adding building where there's currently existing paved parking lot. Uh, we have, uh, more than adequate parking for that. The existing building from the front property line, you could see on the table, and the dimension is seven point nine feet from the front street line. And the addition, uh, as Ben said, the addition is a little further back. So we're at nine point six to the building wall. And eight point five to the bay window, um, that doesn't intersect the ground and just kind of protrudes from the addition. So we are further back. We're more conforming. Um, plus, we're making some nice improvements on the site. Uh, fixing the drainage, the roof drainage, uh, and adding a handicap, um, a dedicated handicap or accessible parking space, van accessible space, uh, to the site where there's currently, uh, nothing formal or nothing that meets, uh, any sort of standard. Um, so we are dressing that up and we are working on the aesthetics of the building as well. So if you have any, any specific, uh, site-related questions or application-related questions, I, I certainly, uh, would love to entertain those.
Well, great. I got some entertainment for you. Um. No, it's, it's pretty easy, actually. I just, I, I don't have a, I don't see a planting schedule in here. Is, is there, let, let me, let me, let me phrase it this way. You're gonna lose a few, you're gonna lose a little bit of parking, but not much. You're gonna add handicap parking. And are you gonna add some, uh, shrubbery or other greenery?
I think I can answer that. Uh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, there is no formal landscape plan. Um, but as the general contractor, when we presented the numbers to the client, we did include an allowance, um, to add some shrubs where we have to remove some in order to add the addition to the building. So there is an allowance for some additional landscaping, uh, but again, it's nothing formal.
Great, that's fine. Um, I'm just looking here. Now, I, so, so basically, all the offices are moving there.
Yes, I mean, basically, they're, you know, running out of space, which is exciting. They're growing as, um, a credit union. And they're looking to really consolidate some of their back office functions into this space. Uh, those for the board, uh, there really will be no, uh, public, uh, member access to this building. There's no need for that. That's for the branch across the street. Um, so it's pretty straightforward, this business use.
Okay, great. Alright, um, so Jim Winn, uh, we're gonna read some correspondence now, maybe.
Okay, bear with me. These are the ones that Eric sent via my iPhone, so give me a second.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not seeing any. Uh, while, while he's looking for that, so, um, Jennifer?
Yes.
Um, you've already spoken, I'm sure, to the building inspector, yes?
Correct. We have an application for building permit in with him. Uh, and he's the one who brought this to our attention, which is why we're here today.
Okay, that's fine. Great. So Jim, go ahead.
Okay, this is from Danny Smith, Captain Fire Prevention Bureau Greenfield. The fire department has no issues with this project. The fire department will conduct a plan review. Solidus has already been in touch with the fire department office. Danny Smith, Captain Fire Prevention.
Yep.
And this is from Inspector of Buildings, Zone and Board Appeals. Uh, no comments or issues with the proposed project. And this is from Alan Torog, Department of Public Works. Department of Public Works has reviewed the site plan from Solidus dated six fifteen twenty for the addition to existing building with the required front yard setback area at sixty Newton Street and has the following comments. Drainage. Currently, the area of the proposed addition is a paved surface that sheets falls to Newton Street. The submitted site plan shows a proposed roof drain being tied directly into an existing drain, manhole in Newton Street. This will require a stormwater connection permit from the DPW. Uh, trench permit. The proposed site work will require an excavation trench permit, trench permit from DPW. Prior to the burial, the DPW engineer individual will need to inspect and take ties to new roof drain lines and propose replacement sewer service line to the existing sewer manhole in the parking lot. And require permits from the DPW, stormwater connection permit, hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, excavation trench permit, two hundred dollar fee. That's it.
Okay, and, um, yeah, that's fine. So that's it. That's it. Uh, so, I'm gonna go to the board members now and see what questions they have.
Uh, Elena, uh, my ears went up and you said you had a building across the street that you're using for the credit union too?
The credit union already has an existing branch, uh, fifty-seven Newton Street. Um, and they currently have some administrative offices within that building. Because of their growth, they're trying to move the administrative offices across the street to a building they currently own at sixty Newton Street, which is where we're proposing to do the addition expansion for them.
Okay, the public doesn't have access to fifty-seven Newton Street at all?
Fifty-seven Newton Street, they do. But what we're proposing at sixty Newton Street, um, is strictly back office and board members for the credit union.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Two Means of Egress, the one that goes out back, how would you get a person, if there were a fire in the front? How would you get a person out of that area? Cause there's no ramp. There's just stairs going in. There's, is there an area of refuge? Or any way of getting someone out of that area?
Well, you know, I'm gonna have to have, consult with my architect. I mean, right now, based on the square footage, you know, we do have the appropriate number of Means of Egress. The, obviously, the, um, ADA, um, exit would be through the front of the building. Um, there is no technical area of refuge as the fire alarm system is not required, um, if there was an issue. So if there was an issue with someone in a wheelchair and having to escape the back of the building, that's something I would need to consult with my architectural team.
Yeah, my suggestion, because right now, there's no way if a person gets out there and there were some fire going on there, it'd be extremely difficult to get someone out of the back of that building.
Anything else, Peter?
Yeah, on the top of the, the, the stairs that go out there, when I was there today, it appears that the footing or whatever, you know, kind of the concrete, is that gonna be repaired as part of these new stairs being put in?
Yes, yep.
Cause I didn't see the plan, anything noted on the plan.
Okay, yeah, you, I believe for the application for this purpose, you simply receive the floor plan, um, and some elevations as far as the architected are concerned. Um, but the full construction drawings do detail, um, what's being done, and those have been submitted with the building department.
Okay, Jen, I believe there, this is, this is Joe Wren. They're talking about the stairs between the two parking lots, I believe.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, between the two parking lots, uh, no, there was no, um, reason that we could see to include that in the scope of work. Uh, those stairs were going to remain as existing.
No, I'm talking about the stairs that's right adjacent to the building that they're, that are.
Yes, uh, on the side. That's, so that's what I was saying before, that those stairs that we are replacing that are adjacent to the building, which is on the side where you have your current oil tank, um, those are being replaced and the concrete is gonna be addressed as well.
Okay, thank you.
In the oil tank, the oil tank is being removed and replaced with propane.
Ah, interesting, yeah, cause that's all you can get is propane. Um, okay.
Peter, there is a comment on, um, I guess, uh, drawing SP one, sheet one of two. It does say existing stairs to be removed and rebuilt.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so David Singer?
The question, um, so the only non-conforming aspect of this building is the, uh, setback on the street, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's what you're looking for a special permit is to expand an existing non-conformity, which is only the dist of the frontage.
Correct.
That is correct. The, the side yard setbacks are zero in this district. Uh, and we need coverage with, uh, leaps and bounds and we're way over parking requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deborah Jelks?
I do not have any additional questions.
Okay, sure. Alright, um, so the board has done with its questions. So, huh, Jennifer, you've said what you had to say. Joe, also known as calling user four, but he had to say.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, just one comment regarding the stormwater connection permit. We did cover that in, uh, note number four, uh, construction note. Um, I believe it's number four, yeah, paint off permits, including the stormwater connection permit. So we did, um, discuss that with the town and we did include that in that note.
That's fine. Um, if the board's inclined to grant the permit, then we'll just condition it with whatever came from the town engineer, which is. No worries there. Okay, so now, anybody from the public who wants to weigh in on the application of Solidus? Am I saying it right? Jennifer, just nod.
Solidus.
Solidus, yeah, yeah, you know. Any members of the public, uh, you have to tell us the name and where you're from. Uh, so now's the time for public comment. All this only. All of this is application for sixty Newton Street. And anybody? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public input portion at eight eleven. And, um, so Jennifer, hang around because we have other people ahead of you and we wanted.
Sure.
Go in the same order. Um, we'll, we'll definitely deal with this tonight, so.
Okay.
Too far, go get yourself a water, something to water.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so board members, can we go back to, um, we have another Jennifer Bate, right? She was first, yeah. Okay. So, um, there wasn't a whole lot of public comment. I don't know if there was any. Um, we've heard the, um, correspondence. Yeah, you know, I wanna say for myself, I've always thought that was a beautiful house that had been let go for decades. I'm glad somebody, uh, I didn't, is, is restoring it. Um, the Greenfield City Council, in all its wisdom, has seen fit to do, uh, accessory dwelling unit, rezoning. And in a furtherance of that wisdom, has seen that in a GI district, it has to be permitted and has to come to us. So that is why they are here. My opinion, um, it looks like a good plan. I'm sure the, the train drivers coming through northbound will appreciate the upgrade. Uh, because that's, that's it for neighbors on that side. Um, I think from the, the, uh, drawing submitted, it makes sense, given the parameters of, uh, zoning. And Jennifer, you can just nod. I assume you guys aren't doing the building. Correct? Jennifer Bate?
Sorry, what?
Yeah, I, I assume you're having somebody build it.
Yes.
Okay, that was it. That's all. Your safe, don't worry. Um,
Yeah.
So it looks to be, you know, I think a reasonable. Um, well, it's okay. You don't have to, I'm talking to the board at this point. Um, I think the conditions or the suggestions of the building inspector are okay. And we could add them as conditions in general. And that's what I, that's, that's kind of my thoughts on the process. So if you guys don't mind, I'm just gonna go down the line. And then if you wanna, you need to be come back to again, that's fine, we'll do that. But Jim Winn?
I had is, what will be the actual street address of this? Will it be three sixteen Silver Street?
Yes, it will be three sixteen Silver Street.
Okay.
It's just going to be one mailbox for the entire property.
Okay, Jen, are you good? You're all set? Alright, thank you. Okay. David Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm fine. Um, I would like the building inspectors, um, suggestions to be incorporated. I'd also like there to be language that says that the unit has to comply with the, uh, section of the code related to ADUs as it is today. I mean, as it, as, as today's code, if it, if it changes, it changes, but to start off with that. And I don't know what to do about the deck. Um, I don't have any problem with it. I don't know, uh, I didn't, I don't see it in the plan, so I don't know if it's before us.
Well, you know, in the, the building inspector included it in his suggestions, I think we can just.
Include it in the special permit?
We, yeah, we, we could include, um, that as a condition that they would.
As a condition, it's an allowance. In other words, it's not, it, it sounds like she has submitted, there's something in other plans that the building inspector is seeing where there's a deck. He's suggesting to us that we include it in our special permit. I'm asking if that's kosher, if it wasn't part of the plans that we saw.
It's in the building permit, um, and it, it, the deck is on the, the building permit that we submitted to Mark Snow.
Right, but I'm not, you know, any of those, I am not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just trying to be consistent in our own.
In the calculations.
Yeah, um.
Oh, it's in the calculations of space, by the way?
Yes.
I don't see, so. I don't see, so in the living space, it's part, that's part of the living space? No?
No, couldn't be. It has no bearing on the living space.
Yeah, so.
Jennifer, I think what David's question is, is we don't see which side of the house this deck is proposed to be on. We know it's 10 by 12, but which side is it? On the back of the house? Is it on the right side of the garage? Is it on the front of the house? It's obviously not between your house and the addition.
Right, it, it's on the south side, so the, the side furthest from Silver Street, furthest from the garage. So if you're looking at the floor plan, um, you have the bedroom, and you're gonna go into the hallway outside the bedroom, and there's a door that's gonna go out to the, the 10 by 12 deck.
Yep.
Out that door, right by laundry.
Yep.
Do you see it?
I, I see the door she's referring to.
I'm thinking, I guess, I guess to be consistent in our, in our business, I don't have anything in front of me that I can permit, so I don't, I don't want to include that in the permit unless we're harming Jennifer. If she can get her own building permit.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, um, yeah, I think it's in the building permit, that the building inspector, that's something the building inspector deals with.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying, so I, I think that should, we don't need to include it in the special permit.
Okay, right, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's fine, um, yeah, and it's, it's not part of the AD, well, yeah, we're not gonna go there.
It won't harm you, Jennifer, because it, it, it's just you going to the building inspector and getting permission to properly build a deck. But for our doing business, if I can't see what I'm permitting.
Yeah, no, that's.
Decision about it, so.
So whenever somebody makes a motion here, what they will do is exclude number 5 on the building inspector's recommendations.
And then I would, I would add a new number 5, which is, um, complying with the zoning ordinance, including the recording of a doc.
All right, something's running out of juice there, buddy.
Yeah, you, we lost you, Dave.
Oh, sorry.
Your number 5?
I would add a new 5 that would say, um, the permit is connected to the conditions of, um, section 718 with relation to ADU, including the recording of a, of a document in the registry of deeds.
Yes, I think that's fine.
So I just wanted to be clear in the permit, so there's no question later.
Yeah, yeah.
And Jennifer was nice enough to answer me that she understands it, so.
Right, that's fine. Peter?
I agree with David, I can, but I have no further questions.
Okay, Deborah?
I have no further questions.
Okay, so the guy who did the most talking can make the motion.
That's you, Jim.
I don't think so.
Okay, here we go.
No, you know what, hold on, Dave, let Jim make the motion, and then you add the conditions, all right?
Sure, yeah, sure.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
Make a motion that we allow Jennifer Bach at 316 Silver Street to, for the construction of a cash accessory dwelling unit consisting of a 2-car garage and a 1-bedroom apartment at this location with the following conditions.
Okay.
For the building inspector.
Yeah.
Except for number 5.
Well, you know what, yeah, um, so with the following conditions to incorporate the recommendations of the building inspector and a memo to the zoning board of appeals dated May 26, 2020, numbers 1 through 4 inclusive, with a new number 5, which would be, as David Singer says.
Recorded the registry of deeds.
Oh, to comply with, um, um, the ADU itself, that the permit is, it has to be, uh, is, is connected, what's the right word I'm looking for? Complying with, or that the ADU must comply with all the requirements of, of our, of the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to the recording of a, of a document in the registry of deeds as required by the ordinance.
All right, can we say that all the current requirements of the current zoning?
Yeah, but I want, again, I'm not busting anybody, but I, I want that, that document has to be recorded before a certificate of occupancy can be issued.
Yep, that's, that'll be part of it. Okay, so that's the new number 5.
Right.
Anybody, I'm sorry, David, what?
Oh, thank you, thank, I'm good.
Okay, anybody have, have any other conditions they wanna put on this?
No.
Did somebody say yeah?
No, she said no.
Oh, okay, that's fine. All right, then, uh, motions are made and seconded with conditions. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, oh, sorry, sorry, it's gotta be roll call.
Okay.
Well, uh, Mark Maloney says aye. James Nguyen?
Aye.
David Singer?
Aye.
Peter Wozniak?
Aye.
And Deborah Jilts?
Aye.
Okay, motion is voted aye, declared unanimous. Okay, so Jennifer, just remember all the stuff we said at the beginning of this. Um, Eric Torog, uh, is homesick today, and I don't believe he'll be in tomorrow. Um, so call him at the beginning of the week, and he can give you more details about when we expect to have this signed and after the city clerk, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Luck.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, moving right along, because that's what I'd like to do. All right, um, all of this. Mister, I think Mister Carl is next, yeah?
Yeah.
See?
All right, so, who wants to start? This is for the permit for 20% backyard reduction at 25 Prospect Avenue. Jim?
I hereby make a motion.
Oh, no, we're having the discussion first.
Okay, I do not see where this will have a negative impact on a neighborhood, it's gonna be right up against the, uh, the fence, so I do not see a property, a problem with a property, and I think it's gonna improve the neighborhood.
Okay, David Singer?
I agree with Jim, uh, I think based on the explanation, uh, situation does comply with, um, the, uh, the exception to reduce by 20%, and therefore I would, I would approve it.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
I would approve the special permit.
Okay, and Deborah Jilts?
I agree.
Okay, so now, Jim, can we get a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we allow the application of Timothy Carlyle for property located at 25 Prospect Ave, assesses map 27 lot 29, which is located in the urban residential RA zoning district for a special permit pursuant to section 200-5.3 E2 and 200-8.3, the zoning ordinance, in order to allow a 20% reduction of suddenly side yard setback from 10 to 8 feet at this location.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by James Nguyen, seconded by David Singer, I think.
Yes.
All right, now I'll call for a vote, roll call vote, Mark Maloney says aye, Jim Nguyen?
Aye.
Um, Peter Wozniak?
Aye.
David Singer?
Yes.
And Deborah Jilts?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion, uh, is declared unanimous, positive. Um, and Mister Carl, you've heard everything that we had to say before. So again, check in with Eric Torog next week, and he'll give you more details about where to go from here.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You have a good night as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, zipping right along. Let's deal with 610 Leiden Road. This is the discussion and vote on the application of Brian Hobbs for 610 Leiden Road. This is R 30 lot 12. Uh, the lottery conversion of a single-family home on a non-conforming lot to a two-family home. Um, somebody wanna start, Jim?
I think this will improve the, uh, the building that's there and spruce up the neighborhood. And I'd be very interested in, in getting the fence repaired between this location and the neighborhood.
All right, good.
Good fences make good neighbors, Robert Frost.
Yeah, sometimes, um, okay, Peter?
Jim took my win, so I'm all set.
Now, if other deliberative bodies were as succinct, um, David Singer?
Um, I'm inclined to vote no on this one.
All right.
Uh, for a two-family to be allowed by right in this zone, it would need 50,000 square feet, and, uh, it would need 200 feet of frontage. Um, and this lot is half the size. So that's the first thing, I don't, I don't see why the zone, I mean, I, I understand the need for housing and all that, and, uh, I hear the other zoning board, the members' feelings about it, but the fact that the neighbors don't want it, and they're single-family owners, the, I know the neighborhood does have other two families, but, um, I just think, I think it's, I think it could be, I think it should just remain a single-family house. I'm not, I, my, my, I don't, I don't, I think it will, I think it will be detrimental to the neighborhood, especially since the neighbors have said they don't, they don't want it there, so. Um, my, I'm.
I didn't get the last part.
I said that I, I think it is a substantial, substantial change to the neighborhood because of the small size of the lot. Um, it's only half the size of what would be allowed by right. So I think that, um, with the neighbor saying that they don't want it there, especially the butters, and the nature of, uh, the road, oh, come on. Sorry, my phone has tapped into my, uh.
Ah, okay.
So I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, um, Deborah? Deborah?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm taking David, what David said into consideration, um, because I guess I'm looking at, you know, the duplexes across the street, and, you know, is that a 50,000 square foot lot? Or is the house next to that 50,000 square feet?
Uh, lot size, um, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be. Yeah, I know there's three or four two-families side by side across the street.
Yep, and while I realize that it's not something that the neighbors want, I don't think what, you know, what is being asked is outside the parameters of, of the existing neighborhood.
Okay, that's fine, I mean.
But I, I also, I also agree that I think, you know, um, improving that fence or making sure that that fence, you know, between the two properties is, is structurally sound, is a good neighborly thing. Um, and ease some of their concerns, I don't think what is proposed here is, you know, outside of what the neighborhood is.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Um, in a second.
Sure, thanks.
Let me just, I'm looking at the, um, on Google Maps here. Yeah, one, one thing to bear in mind for everybody is that the ownership of the fence in question may not be with the owner of 610, it may be butter, in which case, I mean, 610 can offer to fix it or something, but we have, we have no legal authority to make it part of the permit.
Correct, which is why I said it would be nice as opposed to I'd require.
Right, right, no. It's always good when people play nice to go.
Absolutely.
David, go ahead.
So Deb, I, I hear what you say, and I saw the same thing, I just wanna point out that any other duplexes there were built before the zoning changed. So we had a zoning change that, that called for a larger space, and, um, I would have felt differently, but I feel like for them, if, if that's, if that's a change, then it does substantially change the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm gonna vote no, I'm still gonna vote no.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah. This is why we live in a democracy, everyone gets their, have their opinion.
So cool, um, yeah, that's fine. So I guess, uh, you know, this is one of the issues with, ah, wrong clicker, um, one of the problems with frequent zoning changes by people who don't know what they're doing. Um, those houses, the zoning, the zoning has changed several times, and the duplexes across the way were built in the 80s, I believe. Um, because I remember my right, riding my bike out there to the pumping station in the 70s.
That looks about right, looking at the houses.
Yeah, so, uh, it changed, it changed. Changed again, I have no idea where that noises. Um, and, you know, there are people that wanna change it yet again. In which case, this would probably be allowed by right, um.
Let's wait what happens.
Right, right now it's not allowed by right, it's allowed by special permit. So I think we have as much information as we could possibly get at this point. And, uh, the neighbors did weigh in, although nobody wrote in that I can recall. Jim, was there any correspondence from neighbors?
No, nothing at all, I looked at Eric's email that he sent out, and I looked at all the paper stuff, and I don't see anything from the cards that he sent out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't either, so I just wanted to double check it. Um, so, yeah, and, you know, I'm quickly sympathetic to the neighbors, um. Well, I think the plan is presented, yeah, it's, it's clearly an eyesore. And the plan is presented would fix that. Um, it's on the same, it's on the same footprint, that's not changing. The garage remains, um, so that's why we can even really take this up. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Uh, and I don't, again, I don't recall. Jim, did we get something from the building inspector on that? You're muted.
Second?
W had nothing to say.
Uh, the engineer and superintendent had no comment to issue with the project. And the fire inspector had no problems to issue with the project, except he wanted to make sure there was a, uh, proper smoke and CO placement, but nothing from the building inspector.
Okay.
Did it go before the zoning?
I'm sorry, Peter, was that you?
Yeah, did it just go before the zoning board at all, or did it need to?
We are the zoning board.
Yeah, I mean.
Planet board.
Excuse me, the planet board.
Um, I assume it did, but I don't recall any.
Wait a second, Peter, uh, I think they approved this.
Yeah. Yep.
The planning board approved this.
The planning board, their recommendation was a positive recommendation. So, you know, there, there we are, um, and yeah, David's right, I don't. I mean, I, I could have sworn I saw that somewhere else, but I do not have it in my.
I don't, I don't have any paperwork from the planning board.
No, I don't have anything either.
All right, so we, Mister Hobbs is indicating that they approved, they, uh.
Yeah, last week, you're on the board, aren't you?
I'm sorry?
It's a different Maloney, it's a different Maloney.
It's confusing.
Oh, okay.
No, yeah, for me.
Better looking one.
I have, who?
Yeah, it was approved last week by the, or, you know, it was, you know.
Yeah, positive recommendation. Um, okay, so, you know, we'll take judicial notice of it, I guess. So, what I would say is, um, if anybody's inclined to make a, a motion for approval, then they would need to, uh, make as a condition the, uh, include the, um, the, the email from the fire inspector and those requirements, everything else would go through the building inspector anyways. Um, and I think where we're at. So, you know, I said, you know, do people wanna keep talking about this, or are we ready for a vote?
I'm ready.
David's ready, I'm sure.
I'm ready.
Ready? Okay, so if somebody wants to make a motion, now's the time, Jim?
I'll make a motion that we allow the application of Brian Hobbs. I'll make a motion that we allow the application of Brian Hobbs' property located at six ten Leiden Road, Cessers Map, R thirty lot twelve, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to section two hundred dash six dot one C and two hundred dash eight dot three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the conversion of a single family home on a legal non-conforming lot to a two family home located at this location with the following conditions. A per- permit will be needed to taken from the building electrical department, accompanied by a drawn with smoke and CO placements for our review and inspection of the system we done after completion with the fire department.
And I would add for conditions that the uh, the ads built as built uh instruction is, as was submitted in the application. Okay, so everybody understands what we're saying.
Say that again, Mark, please.
The building will conform to the, uh, the plan submitted in the application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, does that, does that mean it'll uh ask that the, the garage will remain and the, and the structure will remain on the footprint of the building?
Yes. Okay.
Yep, you can add one more note to that. In the, the, the plans are shown will include the reuse of the existing garage structure?
Yeah, that's fine. That's, I mean, I'm sure the building inspector will want that, but good to include. Okay. Good. Uh, you know what? One further condition. As presented in the plan, the current uh, living structure. I want to put it this, yeah, no, it's good. It's good the way it is. It's fine.
Okay.
Alright, so, we good with the conditions? We good with the most? And everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote. Mark Maloney says aye. Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
Um, Peter Rosniak?
Yes.
And David's, uh, uh, yeah, that's right, David Singer?
No.
Okay, and Deborah Jules?
Yes.
Okay, so, the motion is declared a majority with one no. And I don't, I don't know if that gets recorded by person, but it David Singer voted no. And he gave his reason, so that's on the, on the record. Okay. Fine, um, so. Yeah, for Mr. Hobbs. Okay, so Mr. Hobbs, I hope you understood everything that we said. And again, call uh the planning department next week. Sometime you can talk to Eric Torog, and he will walk you through the next step, okay?
Alright, yeah, great.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Alrighty.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Mark, can we take a two second, a two minute break?
Sure. Two minutes, Jim.
Thank you.
One fifty-nine, one fifty-eight.
Alright, so when Jim gets back, we will take up the solidus. Solidus. Yeah, application.
Don't worry, Jennifer, it'll take him five times. He'll get it right.
Eventually. Keep wanting to say Celine, look, yeah.
I know, I think I used my daughter's, I mean, my computer when my daughter was looking at a college, that we did something online, and now uh apparently on Cisco Webex meetings, cause now I'm her.
Forever and ever, right? It'll never end with that change.
Nope.
That's always a good name.
How are you guys holding up with this whole virtual thing?
Drives me insane.
Yeah, it's hard.
You know, I think it's actually worse when um, when we do a meeting like this where we're used to being in person.
Mm-hmm.
It's hit harder because you know that it's so much easier when you're in person, whereas day to day, you know, there's people wander by the house kind of thing, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I still have forty-five seconds left of my allotted time.
Let us note this.
I've been dying to say that.
The advantage of being at home for these things, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, Jim Nguyen is back, so our break is over. And let's take up the application of solidus.
Solidus. Solid us.
Solid us. It's the Latin word for complete.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good. Where are you guys based out of?
Uh, we're in Connecticut.
Oh, well.
Do you have power?
Uh, yes, now.
Okay, so this is um the application from sixty Newton Street. Uh, for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash, yeah, blah blah. In addition to the existing building within the required front yard setback area at this location. Okay, I will say, so this is the discussion and decision on that. Um, I have no problems with the plan as presented. Um, and I think, again, I, my recommendation to whoever makes the motion would be to include which I do not have. I absolutely do not have it. It uh would be to include the uh, the memo from the DPW. And I think, yeah, other than that, I think, I think this is actually, it's not adding impervious surface. Um, it's pretty well thought out. It's good that a business in Greenfield actually needs to expand to the point where they want to put an addition and move the offices over there. My total location very well. I think uh plenty of parking. It'll be an improvement to the building, so I think this is a, this is a good Jim?
I believe it's a win-win situation for the town of Greenfield, and as long as we incorporate everything that the uh DPW has requested.
Alright, uh, Peter?
Yeah, I, I'd go along with the project. I would suggest, though, to talk with your architect about that, back there for, for handicap.
Sure.
Okay, and David?
I'm fine with it.
All good? Okay.
My apologies, my moment.
I think one cat.
Have one of those too, yeah.
It's not the first meeting he's crashed.
So, you're good, oh, you're fine with that. I thought you meant you were fine with the cat, um.
Oh, no, um, I guess, yeah, I also had the same questions Peter had about that, um, you know, when you exit out that, that back stair, you know, how you get to someplace safe.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I guess I guess, uh
And I'm assuming, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm assuming you're referring to if you as far as ADA compliance, I mean, if someone, okay, wasn't just
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to see, yeah, my apologies, it's hard to see in the drawings
Mm-hmm.
that we have, how much space is back there, how much room you actually would have to exit the building and then get away from the building because you are on that hill.
Yep, okay.
So I guess, um, if we want a motion, then maybe that's a uh recommendation we can add as a condition. Or add it to the motion. Everybody understand what I'm saying, right? Jimmy, you understand. Peter understands.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so if nobody has anything else on that, then let's take a vote, or let's get to the motion part. Somebody want to make a motion, Jim?
I'll make a motion for the application of solid us. Ink, uh Jennifer Miller for property located sixty Newton Street, Cessers Map, thirty-five lot one, which is located in the general commercial GC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to section two hundred dash six dot one C and two hundred dash eight dot three of zoning ordinance in order to allow, in addition to the existing building within the required front yard setback at this location with the following conditions. Peter?
And the following conditions to be, have a code compliance space for handicap exit to that, that back exit.
And to uh incorporate the DPW, the requirements from DPW, the suggestions.
Recommendations, yeah.
In there, uh, Jim, when, when was that dated? Do you remember?
Tell you in one second. This is back in, and this is what's transmitted to my iPhone by Eric the other day. I didn't get a chance to print it off. And that was dated August fifth at one sixteen PM.
Okay, alright, so we'll include that in the uh uh, I think that's it, correct? Everybody?
That was, that was the drainage, the trench permit, and the required permission DPW.
Alright, everything else is building permit related.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, just checking that. Jim made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Saying none? All those in, uh
Roll call.
Roll call, vote, uh, Maloney says yes. Maloney says yes. Uh, Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
Peter Rosniak?
Yes.
David Singer?
Yes.
And Deborah Jules?
Yeah.
Okay, great, and motion is carries and is declared unanimous. Uh, Jennifer, Celine. Again, just get in touch with Eric Torog next week, and he'll be, he'll have more info for you, but thank you for being so patient.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you all.
Yep, bye-bye.
For your college hunting for your daughter. Okay.
Yep, um, thank you, bye.
Now, last thing for, hold on. So can I get a multiple to approve the minutes from June eleventh? Please.
So moved, second.
Alright, any further discussion? Saying none, um, I'll call for a roll call. Mark Maloney says, yes. Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
Uh, Peter Rosniak?
Yes.
David Singer?
Yes.
Deborah Jules?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So that's all set. Um, I believe, oh, oh, oh. Before I forgot. There's another thing. Hi Walter.
Hi Walter. Hello Walter.
There was another thing here.
What is?
Um, so, we actually have uh, I need the boards uh here for a minute. So Patriot Care has come back. They want to change their hours. We've got them at a closing time of seven o'clock. Want to change it to nine o'clock. Now, we can either make them come back in and do it in front of the full board, or I can do it administratively if the board's inclined to uh, say yes to that.
Mark, which location is that?
Where the American Legion used to
Okay.
So basically, some of their competitors, their hours go till nine o'clock, and so they want to bring their hours into line with that. Now, if we can make them come back and do the whole routine, or if people are okay with that, um, I can do it by administratively. But I need, I need to hear what your thoughts are. David?
I'm like, I, I, it's like I have a Jeopardy hand, you know, ding.
You're faster than me.
Uh. I, I think process wise, that's a material enough change that I think the Butters should be allowed to weigh in. Their submissions are really nothing, you know, it's not like architectural stuff. I think the Butters have to have a chance to know what that, that they want to extend the hours to nine o'clock.
Oh, okay. Peter?
I agree with that.
Okay, Jim?
I go along with David on this one.
Uh, that's up, it's okay to go along with Dave.
Yeah, I would, I have to say, I would also have some questions in regards to the need for that. Yeah, how close is their nearest competitor? What time, I, I don't remember what time they're currently open to.
Who? Patriot?
Yeah, no, what time they're currently, what time they open in at the start?
Uh, I don't either.
So I have some questions I'd like to ask to kind of better understand the need.
That's alright, that's fine. I mean, yeah, so that's alright, we'll make them come back in. Um, I mean, everybody knows my fondness for these projects, so. Yeah, it was up to me. I got a good place for them, it's on the bottom of the American River.
Due process, due process.
Yep, 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 um, all good. Um, but, so to be fair, that, I think that's fine. We'll just do that, so. So, that which leads me to the next point. We expect that we will have a September meeting. There's a couple of things in the hopper. Um, so. Who said what? Sorry?
When would that be?
I think that's what we're about to discuss, right?
Oh, yeah. Um, we're looking at, uh, I don't, hold on.
I have a calendar.
Tell me what?
Second Thursday in September is the tenth.
Yeah, so David, that's when we would be looking at.
Alright, sorry to jump ahead.
Let me check my calendar.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's it's not on my birth date for a change, so, um.
Ah, too bad.
Yeah.
We can change it, Mark. I mean, I don't want you to be disappointed.
That's okay. Um, well, yeah, without, without a reason to change it. What?
I don't know if everybody else would have the same, uh, okay, we're good.
Good.
Peter, you okay?
I'm all set.
Sure, it's not on the Jewish holidays.
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, um, Deb?
I'm good, I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, so, expect that we'll have a meeting. Everything that's, that's coming, I don't I don't think there's anything too contentious. Um, so, yeah, so, um so we'll, we'll do, we'll plan on the meeting for the tenth, okay? And I think that's all I got for now. That's all that we have on our agenda. Um, there is no other correspondence.
I think these WebEx work real great.
I like these meetings.
I do, but we gotta stay this way.
Someone gets to wear his T-shirt. We all get to take a leak in our own bathrooms, I mean.
And I brought ice cream for everybody.
We, we actually have other participants still here, so just saying.
I fear is Mark's gonna send us IOUs for all our, our contributions that we're not
I know, I know, that's the best part. We don't pay them. For the part
I can mail them a check, it's fine.
Well, you know, my belief is that at some point, we will meet in person again. And we can finally get our ZVA uh social get together.
Two thousand twenty-one.
That should be the, with masks.
Well, yeah, maybe we'll wait until twenty-one or something, I don't know.
They come out with a flu shot and a vaccine.
Vaccine party.
Uh, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, I'm gonna stop the recording now. I think I'm gonna stop.